All right, good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 P. M. This is a D.C. Council Work Session, City of Bel Air Beach. It's all rise and good place.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty of the justice for all.
Renee, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
President.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
There.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. All right, we have a couple items that we're dealing with tonight. First item is the code review, Chapter 70, 74, 78, 82, 86, and 90. Mr. Reefler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're going to run through these code chapters pretty much the same way we've been doing the last two work sessions, where we've just kind of mentioned things that stand out individually to take into consideration, but then we bring back the recommendations. These chapters are relatively all short chapters, except for 86, which is the sign ordinance. And that has... We included the old sign ordinance as well as the newest draft that we have. So, I will pass them like over to Mr. Serena to take us through these last remaining chapters.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, good evening. So, yes, we will start with Chapter 70, concurrency management. A lot of these, like Kyle said, are short, so I will just let everyone get started.
Well, I do have a question before we get started. You've reviewed this thoroughly, correct?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
Would you mind running through the recommendations that you're already suggesting?
Yes. Yeah, my notes at this point are in the form of handwritten notes on the hard calendar of the book, so... All right, so I've noted that parks and recreation, that's an optional item for concurrency management, no recommendation there, but just to let you know that you're not required to have a level of service standard for parks and recreation, and the same with transportation. And I know the Pinellas County has done some work where they moved away from transportation concurrency into a mobility management system, so that's one of the recommendations that we're going to present relating to 70-7 proportioned fair share. That's outdated language, it doesn't conform to the county's recommendations for mobility management. And basically, I'm not sure how up you are on transportation concurrency, but it's a statewide system that does not work so well for built-out counties and built-out communities like Pinellas County. It basically says that if transportation's not there, then the developer has to come in and widen roads usually, which is not so easy to do in Pinellas County, not so easy to do in Bel Air Beach, so that's why the county has gone away from that system. Basically, it's an impact fee, or it's like an impact fee when a development comes in and it trips a certain level, a certain threshold. It has to be a major development, so would not affect most things that you see here. It would come into play if somebody does a major redevelopment. Again, it probably wouldn't occur... I say probably wouldn't occur, but it could occur, so we're recommending that you have it in there. And then, certain studies would have to be done if it trips a certain threshold, and usually fees are paid as opposed to widening roads or things like that. A fee would go towards improving mobility, like sidewalks, bike paths, bus stations, things like that. So, we're going to recommend that the city move towards that system. And again, like I said, it wouldn't come into play that often because if you're redeveloping, you can subtract the existing trips, and you're only looking at net increase in trips. So, this would only be like a major redevelopment where they're going to significantly increase traffic, which probably wouldn't occur. It would be a major development.
A good example would be if we rezoned and built lately.
Yeah, if you're getting with a single family, putting up a hire ice, if that scenario would ever happen, then that would trip concurrency, or that would trip the mobility management system. And same thing with concurrency, probably not seeing developments that are tripping concurrency. But that's pretty much it as far as our comments on that. We did go through and check Florida statute references, and I think we're good there, but that's the bulk of my comments on Chapter 70.
Mr. Reefler, did you have any comments on this section?
No, not for Chapter 70.
Counsel? No. All right, please continue.
All right, then we could move to the next chapter, I'm assuming, which is 74, flood plan management. Quite a bit more on this one. And this, like most communities, it's based on a model ordinance, and so we don't recommend major changes to that because you want to be consistent with the state requirements. There are some options that you can make for changes to your regulations. I think we discussed last time about significant improvements and how often that those are tracked, whether it's once every five years, every year, things like that, but those are my comments on that. You're limited on what you can change or what you should change.
So, I sent our current flood plan ordinance to the state for their review. It may take them a little bit, but I... We haven't had it come in a while, so I wanted to make sure that we were...
So, your recommended change is no change?
My recommended change right now is to wait to hear back from the state. I do have a... I may want to recommend changing the definition of market value, just kind of what a lot of other communities in the flood planning are doing, but I'm going to get the consultation from the state first.
Okay. Counsel, any comments on 74?
Floyd, did I refer back? That was in our zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, does that appear to the 74? It does refer back to it, or the section that we talked about, we drafted new ordinance and planning, and we already recommended it.
Good week. Which department does that go to, the state level?
Uh, HSA, Division of Emergency Management.
Okay. Do they need any time span, and do they get back to you?
I guess they're doing a lot of the Broward County right now, and I was trying to get them to commit to the end of summer, but it might be a little bit later.
We don't want them looking at us while they're thinking about Broward County. It's not a good idea. All right, any other comments or suggestions or questions about Section 74? Please continue.
All right, the next chapter was 78, a very short chapter, one pager, entitled planning. So, I think my only notes on this is we may want to combine that chapter, move it to Chapter 94, just so it's all together. We're not sure necessarily needs to be its own chapter.
Mr. Serena, just a question, Attorney Mora. Is it, and I'm genuinely asking because I don't know, is the existence of the LPA usually embedded here, or is it typically found like in other sections where you see the various boards created for a community like the Planning and Zoning Board or the Board of Adjustment? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, it's typically under an administration section with other boards, and I think that's why I mentioned moving it to 94, because I think that's where that section is in planning, which could be grouped with those.
So, we'll look as we start to synthesize these things. We'll look to see where it fits best or where it's most natural. It's a little unorthodox having a board embedded as its own chapter. You have to provide for an LPA, but often it's done in the same breath as, here are the boards we have. We have our Park and Rec Board, our Planning and Zoning Board, and our LPA, so it may just be moving it and putting it somewhere where you're more intuitive to find.
Makes sense. Counsel?
Agreed.
All right, can you roll the chapter 82 down?
All right, 82, another very short chapter, dealing with satellite antennas. Not sure what the... I don't have any notes on that. I'm not sure what the experience is or concern is. A lot of times when this section is in the code, it's outdated and dealing with the huge five-foot satellite dishes, but this one seems to be more up to date, so...
I similarly had a question, having seen the code provision as to where this. Chapter 94 addresses the kind of telecommunications tower that has been of most attention the last few years. This is specific to satellite antennas. I cannot profess that I have done any legal research on what the landscape is and our ability to regulate there, except to say, like Mr. Serena, I'm familiar with the outdated provisions. Growing up, I had a 10- or 12-foot black satellite in the backyard, but maybe point and get a channel from somewhere else, but I'm not sure if this continues to be an issue of concern in your community, or if the technology is such that we... It's always prudent to have the regulation if you think it's an issue. I just wasn't sure what you were... If there was an issue in this community that needed addressing.
Yeah, I read through this, and it seemed perfectly reasonable to just keep it out in front of your house. And does Counsel mind if I call along? Mark Beam.
Mark Beam, as far as the old satellites go, and the old antennas, when it came to waterfront property, they were to be located at the center, mounted to the house. Now, there's still satellites available, but that would depend. That's Elon Musk's system, that requires a satellite to be mounted on the house. So, I don't know if you want to redo it, but I would kind of hesitate based on just that information, or something to science to put an antenna that designates waterfront and interior properties.
Since you've been here, Kyle, in any position, has there been pretty many, any current requests?
I've never had to deal with this chapter, but I think it's good to have.
That's there, right?
Yeah. The one thing I brought up to Mr. Serena was, when I saw an example in the Pinellas County code, is the glare coming off of the new solar panels. So, there was actually a code that prohibits from the sun hitting glares in somebody's window or next door, blocking issues, so I thought that might be something we'll look at.
Does it make sense that we combine this with the antenna section?
Yeah, in my opinion anyway, it might make sense around having a short chapter to move it with 94, but others only just referred to actions.
Any other comments on this section? Yeah, with Section D, 2, the antenna should be placed with integrity beside, but setbacks should be maintained all the time. And going back to what 94, we were talking about, those setbacks are incredibly big. And with this 9, Trump, would we just have to modify the count?
No, this is a different kind. This is applicable to this kind of antenna, satellite antenna, not the telecommunications antenna of what's separately regulated there. So, you're looking at this provision, so no, I would not read that. But that may highlight for us again, language that we will now be mindful of. Again, tempered still by the preemptions on the amateur radio antenna and the authority circulated following our last meeting saying, your setbacks cannot be absolute when it comes to these kinds of, those kinds of antenna towers, not as to satellites, but as to amateur radio.
Well, here's my issue, that ham radio operators have all these needways. Is for Jordan to have a flip under hobby, and most of these antennas and satellites do the same thing.
At least, at the very least, it's a legal fiction they are not the same thing, right? They're...
No, 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 talk about the device and talk about the usage.
Right.
It's for two-way communications in the ham radio, but their whole purpose of that is for national security. That's why they've laid special provisions for ham radio. If an EMP went off somewhere and suddenly everything's down, they can still fire it up, you know, and that's why they've gone to great lengths to make sure that we don't kill them. Watching the view is another story.
But the... I think the feedback is still well taken, and as, again, as we look at these, as we combine and harmonize them, if there's provisions that we can incorporate as a click on both, certainly consider that.
I will say that bringing up Starlink, bias hat, things like that, that is two-way communication. And that's how, I'm sure, many people are now watching TV and they're talking to people on their telephones and everything else. It's definitely something to take into consideration. I don't think we're going to see a lot of it here, but it's possible. Any other comments on this section? Are we making a provision for satellite two-way communication, or are you building what we've got?
I'd like to at least look into if someone has got some newer code to address the technology delay.
Does everyone agree with that? All right, the one that we've all waited for, Chapter 86, signs.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to jump to subdivisions and knock that out.
Let's do it.
All right.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right.
So, we're jumping to Chapter 90?
Yeah, I think we'll spend more time on the...
Maybe you already had a speed prepared.
Nope.
And on subdivisions, I guess my only comment on that is, you may want to consider adding provision for minor lot revisions and units of title and lot splits that can be approved administratively, especially if they unify them and they want to come back in the future and then do away with the unity, that they don't have to go back through the subdivision process all over again. Not sure how often that occurs, but I just noted that there was not, like, an administrative approval for small lot adjustments, as far as I know.
Is everybody clear on what he was referring to there? He talks about like unity of title and division. I don't want to be patronizing, but I want to make sure that sometimes you get lost.
So, you're saying make it hard to join two properties, but make it easy to split them apart if deemed necessary?
I don't know about the first part about making it harder, but just saying, allowing for administrative approval, if I own two lots next to each other and I say, hey, I own these two, I want to make them one, to be, as I understood, and Mr. Serena, please correct me, as I understood, in either case, making those administratively approved, or did you just mean if you're undoing?
No, correct, correct. Make them both administrative. Now, currently, they may be just unifying them through the property appraiser. Some places care about that, some places don't, but I would at least have a sign-off administratively that the town, the city has a record that that was done and signs off on that. And actually, I think the property appraiser does require that, on approval, there is a sign-off from the city, so yeah. But once they want to undo it, not requiring them to do, go through a full subdivision process and plating and things like that.
Who has ultimate authority on signing off on this?
On the... Oh, on if it were to be administrative? I would talk to, I would work out with Kyle if he wanted to do it or designate somebody to do that.
Doesn't the county have the final say on this? Because it's a, it's a tax. If you're combining two lots, that goes right to the tax.
Yeah, and they do have to get approval through the property appraiser. There is a unity of title form that they have, but it has a line on there, you know, check that it's been approved by the city where you're located.
But what I'm saying is if the city doesn't approve it, then you can go to the county for a variance payment.
It's a function... There's an element of home rule involved here, where in some communities, if all it is, is we don't really opine on this, just go to the county, let them know. If, in some cities, it may be, for example, I have a, if you have in your community a rule that says lots have to be at least 100 feet wide and 100 feet deep, and you unify your title, now you've got 190 square feet in each direction, and now I want to break them up, the city's going to say no because you're creating a non-conforming lot. Your lots are not both going to be 100 and 100. And so, at that point, you would need a variance, not at the county level, you need a variance at the city level to create a non-conforming lot, and most communities have a provision that says you can't do that, you can't get a variance for non-conforming lots. But it's an element of making sure you preserve the uniformity of your lot sizes and things, and people don't get cute with, you know, land divisions and additions to cobble something together that doesn't conform. And that's a non-planner's exposition, but from a lawyer's standpoint, you're trying to, you know, keep the aesthetic harmony and logistical harmony of what your lots look like and what their size are. So, yes, the county has to prove it for tax purposes, but from a separate purpose, you may have a local control on it. I think what Mr. Serena's getting at is sometimes when you get these, where there is no non-conforming lot issue and there is no variance, it's just, hey, I bought two lots, they're already, they're all the sizes you need, they're right next to each other, I want to build the two of them, I'm going to put a building right in the middle that's not going to be avoiding any setbacks, making them go to a board, whether it's your Planning and Zoning Board or your city commission, it's sort of perfunctory, because you're asking them like, hey, can I have permission to do something that doesn't violate any issues in your code? I just need the city to sign off. I think what Mr. Serena's getting at there is why put your board through that in that weird position, where they might say no just because they don't like the code or something, I don't know. But getting what is otherwise administratively resolved, what is otherwise a housekeeping matter administratively resolved.
What if it's three lots?
What if? And again, that's all viable or all valid concerns, and you can draw that line, right? A combination of no more than X lots shall be approved in this manner. I think is the sort of thing he's getting at, is saying, you guys get to define the policy. He was just suggesting if it's creating any kind of undue administrative burden in the city, or delay for that matter, you may wish to streamline it, some communities do. I'm not advocating one way or the other.
I want to make sure I understand this. So, let's say somebody combines lots, and they want a big house, so if your first street didn't have a bunch of smaller homes, now you're going to have a giant home there, and that doesn't require any extra approval?
Potential.
Yeah, I mean, that is commonly done, where they build a larger house and they build it in the middle of the lot. Now, you could not, that's one thing that Kyle or whoever would check for, if they decided to split it again, you couldn't split the house.
In the zero lot line.
Yeah, you couldn't do that unless they, you know, but sometimes they do want to tear it down and build two houses again.
A good example would be a guy bought an empty lot next to him because he didn't want a neighborhood, and he has the option of merging those two together, but he already has a house there, he could, he just has a big yard on the inside. Years later, he may want to break it for him because he's getting ready to leave, wants two lots, but he sells his house and sells the lots.
Yeah, that might understand, that the difference is if they build a large home, is it then out of character with the rest of the neighborhood?
Well, character is defined by your land development regulations, so if your land development regulations allow that, it shall not be any taller than X and no further than Y from the setbacks, and you do all those things, then it's in character in that sense. I understand it's not in character in the sense that it's next to a bunch of 32s built in 1994, but, you know, split house, but that's sort of, and that's what we're kind of discussing, is you know what?
We were in the 80s, most of us were 80s, so he was actually saying, we could just say, we're not going to build up, or you're not going to build at all, and he came with an initial apartment, I mean, who came to your apartment on a flood, on a slap in the day in this area? It'd have to be 10 feet, 112. See what I mean? So, that's my whole thing, you know, it roots in the aesthetics of the whole community here. Home can slide, so it's a period of time. Goldie calls.
There we are. You can fit the definition.
Well, I've seen some homes, some newer homes that have been built recently. I guess they, even if they finish four levels, it has to be X. So, it's not necessarily above, still, it's just sometimes...
Still has to be a block.
They'll still have to be above a flood plain.
Right.
It's 10 feet around here.
Right.
I think they're all, only around 12, 14, you'd say, with the changes.
Most people are sliding, yeah, did the garage storage.
Well, the 10 to 100 here, I think the 500 here to 12.
Isn't there some kind of distinction between like replating versus unionizing two lots? And...
Oh, whether or not it's a planted lot?
Yeah, because can't they combine lots and actually replat versus just unionize? And then there's... I didn't understand if you're talking to the property appraiser, how much we could get involved with someone who's got a unionized lot, two lots unioned, and they want to, you know, break them back apart?
Yes, they do have a form similar where it requires sign-off by the city, because yeah, that's sort of what brought it to mind, we have a recent example, and the discussion was, well, do they have to go back through the whole process? And the process in that community was, you know, very cumbersome, and required planning board, commission, and then plating, so, and it was, they were already planted lots at one time, so... But yeah, I think you could do, you could set up a process where you could do it administratively, even if they were planted at one time.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on this section or chapter, Mr. Baker? Oh, yes, sir.
Just something to remember on splitting lots or making two lots into one lot, you've got about three or four different things to think about. One is approaches that are in the curbs to the street and access to the driveway, might have to be redone. Moving a street light might be another one, or a hole. And the other two things, if you've got two lots and go to one, you're going to have two sewer taps and two water taps. I don't know what the county would require, but we had that issue many years ago, where a sewer tap wasn't closed and it flooded back sewers around the house. So, something to consider.
I didn't hear the last part then, you said the sewer was... I didn't hear the last part when you were saying the sewer wasn't back flooded.
It was an older house torn down, and during the remodeling from the original to what was ever added on, they had two sewer taps. One side of the house was the new tap for the second floor, and that house was poured down, and you had an open line that was never properly plugged. Just comments.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other questions or comments? All right, so now we're moving. Yep, right back to where we were, the sign ordinance. Yep. All right. Now, here about to Chapter 86. Mr. Mora, I'm going to turn the floor. Mr. Moore, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
So, we're back to chapter 86, in the broadest sense, I will, I look forward to hearing Mr. Seren's input, should you have any on this? This is a, to me, this really comes down to a question of process and community preference. When I interviewed for this position almost exactly two years ago, at my interview, one of the first topics that was mentioned substantively and asked about competencies was about the ability to review and revise the city's sign codes, it was a stated priority. And after we dealt with some high, immediate priority issues upon my being hired, one of the more substantive things we did, was my firm did, was prepare and circulate the attached sign ordinance. It was requested that we bring something to the council. And so, our firm has written sign codes for other communities in Ellis and elsewhere. And so, we worked that template and adapted it as best we could to this community and said, okay, let's look at what your current code is, what the landscape is, and we provided a very, admittedly, very robust sign code. Before offering it, I did confer with Kyle on it to say, you know, can you administer this, do you have questions about it? Said I was comfortable, you know, once you understood its flow, and so, we put that forward. My feeling is always that I am not a policymaker in your community, you are the policymaker. So I offered you, here's the most robust approach. And understandably, in comparison to the previous draft or existing sign ordinance, the sentiment was this is a lot for a small community, and a lot more than we presently have, can we strip this down? I said, sure, just tell them how. And so, I think we're kind of back in the same place, if there's things that you feel are extraneous, tell me. We'll happily revise in a global sense so it's consistent. I will tell you, one of the challenges, there are two challenges here. This amendment is not just like, hey, let's make a sign code. In 2015, the Supreme Court of the United States issued an opinion that said, sign regulations have to be treated as all other forms of First Amendment speech regulation, and therefore have to be content neutral. At the local level, for Time Memorial, communities had different regulations for political signs versus, you know, real estate signs versus other forms of speech, and most especially, political signs are the one that come to mind, okay, political signs can be out this long, you can have this many. The same isn't true for come run the 5K. And so, that was how it used to be done, and the Supreme Court said, no, you can't have that kind of dichotomy. It has to be content neutral. And that was a plurality opinion, which means that the Supreme Court did not have a clear 5-4 vote. It was, you know, we all, I, we get five, but it's three this way, two that way, and you kind of cobble together what amounts to a majority opinion. And so, there's been some case law since, but the plurality was not, it did not give an explicit, and this is how you do it. And so, a lot of communities have adapted in the format that you have here. The last thing I'll say to that is, what we've offered you is an attempt at anticipating every eventuality, some of which may never become eventualities in your community. And so, as you look at your community, for example, you do not have a commercial district in Beller Beach, I'm keenly aware of that. Yet there's a lot of sign content in here about commercial signs. Well, one of the challenges you do face is you operate as a jurisdiction, a municipality in the state of Florida. Just in the last three or four years, the legislature preempted your ability to regulate home-based businesses to a large degree. And so, if you were a home-based business, and we then have to get into a debate on is this a commercial sign, is this a residential sign? If Randy's going to operate his law firm out of his house and say, you know, come here to get your will done, is that a commercial sign? Well, it's commercial content, but it's on a residential property, lawfully operating a home-based business. This may give us a little bit of like, well, if it's this category, we treat it this way, if it's that, and it takes out some of the guesswork. But, again, I say that to say I welcome your feedback. I want to be really clear, I know sometimes when you have a product that you put before your client, and it's met with, you know, some understood frustration or concern, I am not, I don't have, my feelings are not tied up in this. I just want to get you, as my client, what you want. And while I understand, at least this previous draft may not be what you want, tell me what it is, and I'll happily conform it to what this community needs and finds its needs to be. And that's what I'll say relative to the sign.
Okay, I have a couple of questions before I go around and answer other comments or questions. Your definition of overly robust, tell me exactly what that means for the city of Beller.
Well, a few things, I think if, and when I say, for me, overly robust, or if you wanted to, I'm known in some of my other communities for analogies. This is sort of a Cadillac Rolls Royce of ordinances, here's every bell and whistle we could throw in, right? So, I know just on the face of it, the number of whereas clauses are intimidating and frustrating to legislators sometimes, right? Like, it's 30 pages of whereas clauses, but that's because we're operating in a somewhat fluid legal environment, trying to say, we knew the authority when we adopted this, and giving you a rational basis to say, and we harmonized it all in this draft. Another thing is, there's a list of prohibited signs. You could just say, here's the kinds of signs we allow, anything not on this list is prohibited. But then you start getting into, well, does this meet that definition or this? So there's a long list of prohibited signs. And so, there's different ways of doing that, to be sure, but that's the attempt at exhaustively addressing each possibility, I think, is where I get this being overly robust. I'm not wed to that language, I'm just trying to come up with something that conveys that it is a longer ordinance and more substantive ordinance than I customarily look for.
And your primary purpose was to, in the event that a sign violation turned into litigation, that we could prove that we did everything we could to try to prevent this from happening?
Correct. I mean, I can't promise you the victory, what I can promise you is I'm trying to put us on footing to have a defensible position if challenged.
And Mr. Reed, you said that you would not have a problem administering this policy. Would it?
No, at first it was intimidating, but as I read through it, it kind of boosted in my mind and moderated, it got easier.
And what about code enforcement? What, how do you think that they're going to, let's just say that we approve this, how, do you think they'd be able to handle it?
Yes. Typically, code enforcement officer or staff members balance things off for me or ask me.
At least two council members have made a recommendation of possibly preparing a simplified book. Because it seems like it would be a book to try to dumb this down a little bit, but you want to put up a sign, here's your guy, is that even possible?
Yeah, we could do something similar to the code enforcement brochure that we do, which is kind of simplifying all the language. Putting all in place for the main things people want to know.
So, I'm hearing you're actually pretty comfortable with what we, so far we've got. Mr. Baker, you've been very vocal about this sign ordinance, proposed sign ordinance, I'm looking at your thoughts. Well, I talked to Kyle a couple weeks ago, and I asked him how he feels about that, and he says he's comfortable and thinks, well, he's comfortable. He's got to enforce it then. Our great secretary for the board, he had orders, and I must throw up again. I mean, it's, it is so overwhelming, I think it goes against Reed versus County Gilbert. I think it goes, in simple words of Thomas and his order, I mean, as long as the sign ordinances are even-handed, there shouldn't be a problem. How many babies has that stopped jumping after 25? I mean, this is an even hand, but we don't have a sign ordinance right now that we're enforcing for the last, what, four years, what problems have occurred? And?
You know, nothing that would be any different than, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
But we haven't had one in four years, and we haven't had any issues, so why would we burden our residents with something? And it would be a book if you put it together, like Gone with the Wind, I mean, people's heads would be spinning. Last work session, we were concerned about too many permits coming in, reducing that one, the five-year, we're back to the one year. My God, somebody put a sign in their yard of whatever, it has to be this big, now that, you're selling this type of logic, it only can be this big. This is just ridiculous, this is over, this is government overreaching, and I can't support it. I'm sorry, Kyle, I told you we don't do it, I can't impose this on our residents. Councilmember Elliott.
Well, I share the same concerns in terms of the administration of the ordinance. And I'm comforted by you saying that you feel like you could administer it, so that's good. But the other side of it is, can our citizens understand it? And one way of avoiding litigation is to have clear rules. And so, you never, you never get to litigation and have to defend anything if everything works smoothly and you end up with no problem. One thing I was wondering about, and I understand, I mean, I certainly appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I understand the goal. I'm wondering, though, obviously, I think you mentioned that municipalities throughout the state have been dealing with this very same issue when we drafting their ordinances. Can we see some samples, perhaps, of other ones that have a little bit more direct and simplified language? It's not the language, it's simplified, the terms.
I can certainly research how other communities have done this in other parts of the state. I can tell you, when this, when Reed first came down, there was, there were two firms in the state of Florida that were willing to rewrite them for cities. It sort of became a cottage, you know, service. One of the attorneys at one of those firms who was doing that passed away, or became very ill around 2017, 18. Their firm stopped doing it altogether. And so, our firm said, well, at least they've done a few, we'll look at what they've done, and we'll use that, adapt it towards our clients, and that's what you have in front of you, which was, which reflects what communities were doing at that time in response to Reed. And I'm not suggesting this is the only way to write a sign code. There are other approaches, we can find them, if that's the will of the commission or the council, I'm happy to look into that. We can do more in that regard. Thus far, it's mostly been, well, we'll look at it and we'll get back to you, and so, I'm not clear that that's what's desired. I know there are members of the council who have been vocal in that regard, and I respect that opinion, I just want to make sure. I work for a consensus direction, and so, we can, I can definitely provide more backing in that way. I think we also have Mr. Seren here, I don't know if he has additional context he may be able to provide in that regard, as well as he and I don't always work in the same communities or in the same regions, so.
Mr. Roberts. So the changes that we currently see that are highlighted and strike out, red text, that type of change, we could want to, some of us live here, want to work on changing this for crime?
Within the framework of the existing template, those were the things where I said, listen, this is where it really is. I want you to understand, this number was a purely, here's a number, if you guys want to change it, change it. And that was the discussion, a prior composition of the council, although three of you at least were there, did discuss this and give some direction, that's how we got to the draft. But again, highlighting that 60 days, for example, is not some Supreme Court requirement. And so, I wanted to, I didn't want to mislead you in that regard when I say, this is drafted for legal compliance, and then you say, well, where does it say it has to be 12 feet and not 20 feet, right? But it doesn't, and I want to make sure that those customizable elements are quite literally highlighted for your review as the policy.
Randy, I want to put a sign in my yard that says, Jesus saves me, okay, on a big 4x8 piece of plywood. Is that for you to be protected?
It's protected by the First Amendment, but you can still have time, place, and manner restrictions. And so, if we say, okay, you can have that sign, but it can only be, you know, 5x7, you have the ability to regulate in that fashion. And so, we would say, hey, you can put your Jesus is love, or Jesus saves, or, you know, Let's Go Brandon, F Trump, all the things that we've seen that have caused great consternation in a lot of communities, as long as they're consistent with those sorts of things. It is First Amendment speech, yes, sir.
And I don't, and I, and this is no reflection on you, you submitted, okay, so I don't think this is personal.
I'm not.
Yeah, but you're regulating the size of one of the company or whatever, okay, and that's what I think.
It's the commercial versus non-commercial dichotomy that I think you're pointing to, and that is, and that actually is a very well-recognized principle, both in Reed and in its progeny, in the cases since, the Supreme Court has consistently held that the commercial versus non-commercial dichotomy is appropriate for differing regulation. And that, to the extent that there's a dichotomy, that's what you're seeing.
But my question posed, I would think, because of the variables of different sizes of signs in this thing, I think I would go right to the Supreme Court. Even though when I said Jesus, I think the guy walking down the end of the street, his name is Jesus. What I'm saying, this is the way you can really get yourself jammed up in a community. I mean, I think we should just let this alone.
So, the only, what I would say, just as a word of caution in that context, is the existing code in its current form has language in it that we cannot enforce. And inasmuch as it includes, I believe, and I'm trying to remember because it's been a moment, if it has, for example, the political signs and provisions, which I believe it does, it can only be out, you know, this size, this number, this whatever, you can't enforce that. And what happens is then you get, more to the point on your concern about citizens, the citizen reads this and says, hey, the vote for Randy signs are all over the place, they're too big, our code, do something about it. Oh, we can't do anything about it. Then why'd you keep it on the, like, why have a code if you can't enforce it? That's ridiculous. You knew, and you knew, you know, and then we run into that line, and so, we have to do something about it, and maybe this isn't that thing.
But isn't our code right now for signs isn't had to held in advance, we're not enforcing it?
It's, we're not presently enforcing it because of that reason, however, that, I don't think it prudent, as your legal advisor, my advice would not be hold it in abatement perpetuity. It would be, we recognize that it's an imperfect product at the moment, and let's find a better product. And again, this may not be it, but we need something that I think better harmonizes it. And I'm, if the, if the collective or even divided consensus given our current numbers is that, you know, I just, I want to see more, I want more information, or I want other options, or I want to see what can be done, then let's do that, that's fine. I just, my advice to you would not be to say, play it as a box, and just, or just keep your sign code in the bay. Because it also creates false or unreasonable expectations on your city staff of the residents at large.
And we have seen these cases in the past. This, it's completely, it steers the council in the wrong direction to say that we've never had a problem. We've not had a problem lately, but we have seen it, and occasionally, we do. A guy, unlicensed, whatever, mails a sign to a post and walks away. They come along and they stick their sign in the corner of somebody's empty lot, and they walk away. Even during the elections, we saw that it was just completely off the hook. And we, I believe that we do have to regulate signs, otherwise, we're leaving ourselves wide open for problems in the future. It may not be a problem right now, we're quiet and we're calm, and I appreciate that, but it may not always be that way, especially if these home-based businesses, if they start cropping up.
And I would tell you that to the extent other jurisdictions have done this, where I've seen the council have the most angst has usually been because, when we talk about non-commercial temporary signage, which is the sort of nomenclature for anything from like Coman for the Cure or Vote for Randy signs, the most challenge has often been the politicians looking at this, saying, okay, we're going to limit people to five temporary signs, and there's an election where we have three seats up, the president, and vote yes on, you know, seven, and all this stuff. That applies just as much as it's Randy's birthday and we put signs out, you know, in the yard and stuff. And so, that's often where I've seen councils struggle extensively. The other part is on how many prohibited signs do you want to enumerate or identify, and in the ways of like snipe signs. Like, I put a, you know, I happen to find out that the lot next to Frank's is empty, and I put a little sign up that says, take karate classes at my dojo. You know, nobody's really monitoring that, but I'm putting them in all the places that, all throughout town, because there's several places you can find it anywhere, where like, oh, nobody's really monitoring. So those sorts of things are where the rubber's met the road in some communities, or where there's been the most discussion. Ultimately, I work at your pleasure, my recommendation at this stage would be, if you want to see other products, I'm committed to getting you not just this template, but committed to getting you not just this template, but here are how, you will see some uniformity. I'm not going to say they'll find, find things identical, similar, they're not the same. And I'm happy to provide those and then see if there's, you know, other communities that might be better suited for you and, and other communities that are not just communities. My firm is drafted, obviously, you'll get a more consistent product. My, my inquiry at this point would be at the risk of upsetting a peer or colleague is if Mr. Serna had anything he wished to add at this from a planner's perspective or what he's seen advising other communities.
Mr. Serna.
Yeah, we did not comment on the framework of that because we're going to defer to the attorneys as far as meeting the legal requirements. We noted there are new sections, but we understand that those sections are probably required to meet legal requirements and then the content issues. We, we just sort of focused on the types of signs that I think, the attorney mentioned prohibited signs, that's all new. Some, you know, are, that's something you, that's a section you might want to pay attention to. Then we also looked at the numbers as far as how many and how large, just to look at the differences. That's really what we wanted to, we thought maybe you should focus on if, you know, if currently you're allowed a certain number and a certain size of signs, what would this, what would the impacts be of this proposed regulation? As far as the way it's laid out and the length, we did not provide comments on. There are other examples that I'm sure the attorney can provide and we can provide. This community's a little different because it doesn't have a large commercial section, and that's usually where most of the sign regulations are, are focused on. So definitely could find some shorter examples, but we, we didn't want to comment on, on how it's laid out or anything because of the, you know, we do want to make sure it meets the legal requirements.
Mr. Roberts, not trying to be all this.
I think what you requested, well, yeah, if we could give some finished products, that some cities in our area are currently using, and if Kyle's comfortable with those, I think we can probably take a look at those, however many we get, use parts from each one to come up with something that we think is best. Keeping in mind that we are pretty much entirely a residential community, so a lot of the sign information that may be in some of those other towns and cities are maybe really commercial, which we really don't have. So we can hopefully simplify some of those that have been in existence, you know, working well. You know, that's the biggest form of collateral, if we can find a sign ordinance that's been in place. We don't have a very long time period because we may be outdated in respect to some of the changes that the state or federal government could have played, so. But I think those would be a good tool to take a look at, you know, of our own. What we have here right now may be very close to what we're looking for. And Kyle has said more than a couple of times that he's comfortable with it and he thinks it can be taken a look at by the officers that are keeping those on. So if Kyle's comfortable with it, if he's comfortable with enforcing the sign ordinance, that's important.
I think whenever I scoured through this, I mean, about half of these definitions. I mean, we have definitions in every chapter. It's the very first thing that happens. Unfortunately, whenever you're referring to signs, there are so many, so many items that must be defined before you can even say, now that you know what this is, here's the rules for it. I think that it would be nice if there was a clear separation between residential and business. The problem is, is that a lot of it is replicated if you do that. And so you would actually make it grow if you were to split it into two completely different sections.
Councilmember Elliott.
I would, I would be interested in you looking through this after, after its review, after it goes through the initial review and let's see what the recommendations come back. And once, once we've got recommendations made, then maybe we take a second look and maybe you can take a deep dive into it because you have legal, a legal background.
What do you mean, when it comes back for review, you generate some samples? So what do you?
Yes.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
And member Shaw Elliott and I actually began this dialogue when she was a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, and she and I have exchanged some of the, the resources and materials that I was relying on and referencing in my exposition. And so I'm happy to work with you more directly on this as we started on the past. You know, we've taken some, some detours through Form 6s and other things, but happy to revisit this and, and work through, continue to work through it to get a product this community can be happy with.
And I, I think really, if, if we're going to try to take things away, what, what I would like to see is a, what we absolutely have to have. What may, what we can keep just to make things more clearly defined and then what we think is just not a play for the city of Illinois.
And what I would ask of each of you as councilmembers, and I mean this in a one-on-one context, is if you have, whether anecdotally or just having reviewed it like, hey, I remember, you know, John's fishing spot back in 99, you used to have a giant thing out here and what, you know, whatever the thing is, if there's something you know about your community. I, I don't live here. I, and not, and in a real sense, I don't live here. I don't see it day to day. So if, whether you're aware of a specific example or, or just a concern you have of something, hey, when I was traveling and I was in New Smyrna Beach, I saw this sort of thing and I definitely don't want that sort of thing here, whatever the concern, no disrespect to New Smyrna Beach. If you have particularized concerns, one is my client, but two is the policymakers who live here, just let me know so I can factor that in. By way of example, when I was working on a similar draft, which they've not yet adopted in Indian Rocks Beach, one of the concerns became, hey, well, we have this property that's right off the bridge, it's always had this, will that be considered non-conforming? Do we need to give it any kind of special distanciation? Those sorts of things, like, I don't know what, you know, is considered the character in history. And so I always welcome that input and I just want to make clear to all four of you and anybody who should join your ranks, when I'm making policy, I'm doing it for you. Give me the input and I'm happy to, to evaluate it.
Yeah, and just, you probably already know this, but what actually kicked all of this off to begin with was that we had one gentleman who was hanging a 20-foot banner on the back of his balcony, and that was infuriating. And then you had another guy who, who had a small political sign and his neighbor didn't like the candidate. And so multiple phone calls were coming in, this is before City Manager Reesler took over, but we just didn't have a clear current direction on what to do in these cases.
And by virtue of what I do and the associations I'm in, I'm familiar with some, some of the more notable examples around the state of that. And I plan to reach out to their city attorneys and see in light of what, you know, those experiences were post-Reed, Reed being the Supreme Court case, you know, how have you adapted? Have you done anything with your code and see if we can get the benefit of, of the controversy without having to go through it.
Are you saying IRBs will be there and review their sign?
They, yes, they are or were as a result of Reed. They have not yet adopted it. They had a similar draft before them and they got sidetracked into an issue of short-term rentals that they felt that this was not an undertaking. So it's also, they're in a similar posture to you where it's come before the Planning and Zoning Board a couple of times and they're commissioned once or twice in the previous compositions that they've not adopted. They're not actively, it's not actively on an agenda, it's on the action item list of policies if we can get past one other policy.
Do they have a lot more?
But their, their community is different in character from yours largely.
Extremely. And their current, their current sign ordinance is like 28 pages compared to the IRB or something like that.
Understood. Understood.
But they're also going through a refresh.
They're, they're evaluating all their policies as any community should do regularly.
And this is Indian Rocks Beach we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And they're pretty much going through, they, they almost have, well, they have a very similar version of this, is that right?
Correct.
Half, half the version. Is that half now or half, well, half, half right now? Oh, yeah. Okay, so, but what they have is something larger than this one.
What's been proposed to them is substantially similar to what's been proposed to you. With distinctions made for each of your communities and Kyle can attest that, and giving it to him, I said, you know, if there are things that are specific to your community, let us know, you administer it, we'll cut, we'll, we'll add it as appropriate. We try to tailor it, but again, when you're not on the ground in the trenches as, as it is at each day in a community, you have to respect your, your client's input and that's what we're trying to do.
Everyone concerned, do you think that we can come back to this in next month's worst section, planning for this?
I, I'd conservatively like to say we can try for May. It might be June just based on the efforts of getting, I know reaching out to other attorneys, I usually don't get the feedback as promptly as I'd like it. And I do want to, I do want to talk to some of my peers and colleagues to make sure I'm giving you the, the benefit of that knowledge. So I would say perhaps better to commit to June and if, hey, if we're ready in May, then that's great.
Counsel, everyone good with that?
Just a quick comment I wanted to make. In my opinion, it's not always, less is not always better in something like this. As I say, Kyle, he needs a phone call and somebody's asking him about a specific type of sign he would have used or a size of his particular unit. It's always nice if people look at the sign ordinance and say, yes, a 14, this is exactly how this is going to handle, as opposed to, we don't really address that. That's a problem.
And, and that's the balance we're, we're running. It's the, the same is true in your personal life when you talk about insurance, how much just-in-case resources do you wish to have? At some point, you're overinsured, but you're never quite sure when that moment is until, you know, you realize it. So again, I, at the risk of beating a dead horse, I, I'm prepared to get you more information and some comparison and contrast work with member Shaw Elliott and see if we can't either come up with something different or explain why this is the best fit, if it is.
And what happens if Kyle says this is where it's located and the guy has some public assign knowledge and says, well, that's not what Reed guilty is.
Well, anybody can make a legal challenge, councilmember, right? I don't, I would not, I would not predicate policymaking based purely on the potential that somebody may make a legal challenge, only because that possibility always exists. Anytime you regulate, anytime you regulate, that's a possibility.
All right. Is that it? Any other questions or comments on this?
All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And I look forward to your review and getting it back to the city attorney. And I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, now we are up to item number two, discussion of stormwater study. And I believe we have Larry Plute.
Oh, mine?
Well, you're here.
He's lying.
I don't lie, I see your name up there.
He's going to be presenting.
Oh, okay. Well, that's funny because I thought I saw him and then I saw his name, I thought he was back, but I didn't, I actually couldn't see him back there.
I'm right here, alive and well.
Thank you for being here tonight. How are you?
Great, great.
Good.
Okay, let's see. And I believe I have to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, well, working on the stormwater pumps, and I have here tonight some options for the Ninth Street location, we have some options to look at. And then for Ninth, I mean Seventh, that's another location. Starting off with the location on Ninth, we have four different options. And what you see up now, option one, is locating that in an area where there is an existing inlet, which is the last inlet before it goes out to the Seaway.
Excuse me, Mr. Plute, is this C2 that was passed out? Are we looking at that on the screen?
Yep, C2.
All right, thank you.
The, what I'll point out is, one of the things to remember in this area on Ninth Street is the, all the other locate utilities that are located up there. And underneath there, we have existing gravity sanitary sewer, we have Malice County water main, we have reclaimed water main, and we also have some overhead utilities, which we kind of tried to show everything there on the map so we have an idea of what, what we're running into, the places we have to work around. So in this location, it's, it's within Maritou Way. It's going to be trying to make these pump stations as less industrial-looking as possible than the residential area where they're located and, and functioning. The, in this location, we're looking at, you know, we first looked at casting place, wet wells, the pumps, and then we got a look at wet wells for your sanitary let stations, they're pre-cast, pre-cast, so we started, pre-cast is the way to go for source cost and heat cost. And so this is a, a pre-cast wet well similar to what you see here in the let station. And there we would intercept the stormwater. And the type of pumps that we would use, we talked to MWI pumps, who manufacture storm pump systems. And so we, we worked with them, given the flow rates and the elevations to work with. And so they came up with pump size and cost. So we put together the, the equipment costs and the construction costs for that. And then this option one, and, and getting the water out because, you know, the water pulls up there and it doesn't have a way to get out, that's why it's popping up in the project, is we would intercept that at the last manhole of the storm sewer before it goes out and discharge that to the creek that's just to the northeast. So run in front of the property line. Would be about an eight-inch discharge and that will draw the water down that would be climbing on the, on the streets. So that's that's option.
Mr. Plute, can you, can you explain to me what it is on top? I see plumb, I see a square, I see a big white circle, I see little white circles. Can you, can you define those before we get any further so we know what we're looking at?
I'm glad you asked that, because yes, it is, you know, not familiar enough. Can you see that on, as I'm pointing, that arrow on the?
I can, yes.
What we have here is this location here, you see this circle with the white in the middle?
Yep.
Okay, that's the proposed wet well of the pump station. And what we're doing is these lines, these triple lines that you see here, that's the stormwater system that's carrying the water through the inlets to the manholes and then it discharges through here and goes out to the Seaway. That's, that's where all the, the water collected is, is being. So what you see here is these items here that you see here, these squares with the little D's in there, those are stormwater inlets.
Okay.
And this darker dashed lines that you see coming in the street. And this darker dashed line that you see kind of in the street here, that's the underground gravity sanitary sewer. So we have, get an idea of where, where that is and where it's going. And it's kind of collecting there to three points there, so it kind of collects there. What we have shown here is kind of hard to see, but this large dark line that you see?
Yes.
And, and goes around on the curbside, well, that's your potable water, that's Pinellas County water, water supply system. And, and forgive me, but there's another lighter dashed line, kind of put on the south side of the street as it comes along.
Under the driveways.
Under the driveways. That is the reclaimed water, that's a four inch reclaimed water. And that comes down, and then actually comes down to the front of the houses, and it will go south to the next street, and then goes north in front of the houses in that Rottaway, and it goes up and feeds the reclaimed system up this way. And, and then overhead, you can't see it very well, but it's, it's telephone poles, this is like, there's, right there where I have, that's a telephone pole, and then there's one across the street right in front of this house, that's a telephone pole. And so the lot, the power lines are strapped from those.
How deep's that four inch where reclaim water?
I don't have a depth on it, but typically it's about forty inches there.
Deep?
And that's just the county standard. We, before we, we have to get some, we get some survey to make sure of the actual depth, it could be thirty inches.
I thought it was, I thought it was above thirty.
Yeah.
There's no floor spanners.
Right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, no, please. And I think here on that, so with that, you know, the location of the pump station, and then what we have this dark line, that's the discharge that would take it to the north, to the creek and discharge it out there. So the goal here on this one, and on these options, far as you, when the tide is up high, the water's not getting out and it's pumping up, this pump system will take it out to this ditch, and it'll be at a higher level, so it'll be able to discharge and suck that water out. And that's the goal here on this.
Okay, and you said the big round black circle, that is the basically the well?
Yes.
Okay, so in item, option three, can you tell me where that well is? Wait, wait, okay, I see.
You see, if you look at the note where it's going to the creek, look at where the creek is.
Okay.
You're gonna see the black line and then a dark mass, sorry for the printout, but that's the, that's the rip raft where it would discharge it out. But the location there, if you can see the white D?
Yeah, it's kind of in the shadow, that's why I couldn't see it.
Yeah.
It's more towards the same angle to the inlet. Now, is the elevation higher in option three?
Yes.
That's what I figured. What's the lowest elevation at all, where the well would be?
The lowest? They're all very close, but option one would be the lowest.
What's, what size would the well be?
The well would be six foot diameter.
Okay, so you're not making a sub stage, not making a sub basic, or retention basic at all, you're just making, okay.
Yeah, be right in the well.
And option one would require an easement, is that correct?
It's in the Rottaway.
It's in the Rottaway now?
Yeah, when, when we look at all these, we try to keep everything in Rottaway or publicly owned lands.
Because we already have plumbing there now.
Right.
So option, option one's the cheapest way of doing it since it's...
Yeah, I mean, they're all very close, but yeah.
So do you have a representation of what that well would look like?
Yes, I do. It is. That's the, it's a circular well, six foot diameter, and the depth would vary based upon the depth of the existing gravity.
Existing height?
Yeah.
Alright, and what about height up out of the ground, what are we looking at?
It's gonna be ground level.
So it'll be pretty flat?
Right, and then what would be extending above the ground would be the control box that you see there, so those are usually about four to five feet.
Okay.
You know, stainless steel box. But the top would be at ground level. And...
So four or five would be exempt?
The Twenty Second Street sanitary lift station?
Yes.
It'll look a lot like that.
A lot like that, okay. Could you repeat, what, Twenty Second Street?
This sanitary, yeah.
So you're saying that, you mentioned there's a creek there, so the pump, the pump is gonna pump to that open creek, and then gravity just takes that out?
From the creek, yes.
Okay, so there's no outfall pipe or anything there, it's just, through gravity empties into there. So if we have a very, very high tide, what happens there? Does that, does that water actually back up on that creek?
No, I'm trying to...
It's gonna have to be pretty high so that the water doesn't come all the way to the top, that swell could be blocking the way.
Right, for the, for the mic's sake, but wait, now, I'm just curious, if we get a real high tide, does it back up?
Oh, currently that swell, yeah, it backs up into that retention pond.
And it did, yeah.
Has it ever overflowed? Has it ever overflowed?
I have not seen it.
That's good.
During Idalia, it was close.
So, so what would be the max, just the max height tide, what, three point four feet? So what about that? And what I'm saying is, what would that creek's height be, that four feet, that five feet, three point seven feet? What do you have for the elevation right where the swell is?
I think we're, I think we're max height tide is three point four.
The, you know me. I don't know.
And that wouldn't be where the storm, like, we get a storm surge and the winds blowing this direction?
I think it's about elevation four at the swell, top of the bank.
No, what are the, it's five point four.
What is it on the road?
Huh?
What is it on the road?
On the road.
On the road?
About a hundred thirty miles.
Uh...
And it's a, which way the wind's going, and on that, it comes this way.
And the road, there at the creek, it's three point nine four, almost elevation four.
And that creek is, is there a pipe at the end of the creek? How does it exit the Seawall?
There's a, there's a pipe coming from the retention pond underneath the road, out of the swell.
Right. But the creek itself doesn't have a wall or anything, right? It's just a natural creek?
It's just a...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
And it does fill up? Wow. So I guess what we need to realize is, is that, first off, you think that all of these options are pretty much equal, maybe within an inch or two?
Correct.
Okay. And as far as the exit strategy, is there any advantage or disadvantage to picking one particular location for the pumping station?
Now, the, you get the most of the advantage by picking at the lowest downstream point that you can, but with the elevations that we're talking about, it isn't really gonna make that big of a difference between, you pick it there where we showed option one or across the street, another option, it's gonna be functioning about, pretty close to the same.
So it really boils down to aesthetics and cost?
Yes.
And as far as the cost goes, doesn't really look like there's a whole lot of difference.
No.
Okay, alright, so more than likely, the neighbors that are, probably want to know what, okay, here's the options, pick, what do you think? Would you want this across the street from your house, would you want it next to your house? If you're the one that's gotta look at it, but here's the benefits.
What are you talking about? I mean, the wells vary, so the only thing, the only thing we're talking about is aesthetics is the control lines.
Right, yeah, drive down Twenty Second Street is, is a big thing sticking up and it has lights.
Yeah, but I'm thinking more like it's Seventh Street where they have a sewer pump station. You go down there, I mean, you know, a sewer pump station, maybe?
Right.
Yeah, I would say it would be probably at the size of that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's way, yeah, yeah, it's gotta smack up.
Yeah.
Can panels be built around that?
Can what?
Panels be built around?
Like decorative panels?
Yeah.
You can, yes. The, in the location here on Ninth Street, if there's, there should be enough room to do that.
I appreciate all your time, Larry, and you weren't here when MWI was in, but they said they actually have some neighborhoods where you don't see any of them. The control box, everything is buried. Did they, did they talk to you about that or?
I didn't talk about buried control box.
'Cause I was concerned about, what about maintenance at, and they said, we have these twenty years of building, you know?
Well, I can certainly talk to them about that, about, you know, on the control, mainly we're talking about the controls of the pumps, and the well itself is below the rig, then it's the control panel. What I've shown here is what's typically done. It can be in an underground vault, as long as we keep the vault dry. Yes, we can do that, and...
Because the area you're talking about, Thursday last, when we got that storm, that was still wet, that area, it was an immediate over here at nine o'clock in the morning, and that was still wet, it was still water accumulated following the day, you know? We know, probably had...
I was at home, but I took, I took photos.
We had like two feet of water.
My neighbor took pictures, I know.
I don't think the people is what I'm saying, would really be blown out of proportion having a control box there if it were the only need, you know what I'm saying?
Each other went underground?
Well, I'm talking about anything, you know, like you said, you could put shrubbery around it, you could put a wall, decorate the wall, if you got rid of the flood...
All the screens, you know?
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is, here's the alternative, you know, go for your house or...
Exactly.
And obviously hiding the entire thing may be an option, but I'm sure that drives cost, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, we're talking about the cost of the fence and material, and, and one of the things to think about, even, you know, putting a control panel or a vault under the ground would be making sure that it's watertight, it's just gonna be underwater for a while.
Seals break down, things happen, depending upon how many events you have, risk of increased maintenance. I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to Mr. Beam right quick, please go ahead.
If, if you don't mind, if you don't mind. Anybody that has a pump like that in front of a home, would be a real deterrent, maintenance anytime, night or day or whatever. If it was gonna be put in, and I had anything to say about it, I could move it into the city property on Park, and run the pipe over, but, or even doing that, how do you plan on powering this thing up? When the power's out out here, how's it gonna work?
Well, the, the power would be provided through...
Duke Energy?
Duke Energy. And it'd be, it's the same way as, as the cemetery lift stations, you know, they have a...
Well, they have, they have a voltage generator to bring out and plug in when they're not working.
Right.
Have we found that?
The, I haven't worked on the emergency, on what to do when it's out, but the idea or the situation in this location would be having a generator running alongside...
When the water does come up and go over, it's sitting out here, you can't run that pump, so you're gonna have to have various devices on there to shut it off when the water's too hot. Because it makes no sense to run it.
We're, we're aware of that.
I understand, another point, at one time, there's a seawall planned along here. So if that seawall was put in, it would help the situation. And then the swell could be made larger, could take more of the water that flows down behind Ninth Street and behind the homes that are cut off, off the causeway bulletin. That would block a lot of the water, could give you extra capacity. How much capacity? I don't know, but this was in discussion years ago. And they're even gonna put a, dig up the parking lot and put a swing pool under that to collect some of the water, and then drain it. But the fact's that you're gonna lose power out here. Have you thought about this, Mr. Becker?
Well, exactly, I brought that up when MWI coaches there, and they said diesel backup generators would have to come in, but going with your tenure, residency here, I've heard about that seawall too being installed back here, and I've only been here ten years, and there's been nothing that I've seen planned on proceeding now. And I agree with a hundred percent, we need, that would reduce an enormous amount of water.
So this is turning into a giant project, and right now, I'd like for everyone just to focus on pumping stations, because I do see benefits to having them, but I also want everyone to understand that it's not gonna prevent flooding, it's gonna do...
That's, that's one of my points.
It's going to reduce the amount of flood time, because as soon as the water gets above the seawall, you're flooding, there's no stopping it, no pump's gonna fix it. It's only for that period between when the check valve is closed and the time that the water is below the top of the seawall. So you've got this little time right here where it's a difference of four, five, six hours that you're underwater versus, say, thirty minutes. Damage is still done, you're just, it's less time.
And if you don't have power, then you're not gonna have anything either.
Well, the power is another story, because we did discuss buying, and it was...
Yeah, I know, we talked about that when you were in, for some reason, that was taken out of budget.
Just, just for point of reference, okay, when it reaches the seawall, from First Street down to Fourteenth Street, people have two to four feet of water already in the street. Like, you had MWI pumps in there, I gave them a bunch of mathematical calculations of gallons of water, a street width and everything like that, they ran them and they said, yes, when it reaches the seawall, you will get water... They ran them and they said, yes, when it reaches the seawall, you will get water into the street. But as Dave pointed out, it's only for a short period of time. There would be no water in the street prior to that. So you already, when the water comes over the seawall and you already have four feet of water in the street, where's it going? Into the house. You're gonna, you're gonna get water in the street, but you're gonna get it in the street, not in your driveways and in your house.
There's also another advantage to doing this is that seawall, during high tide, the check valve closes and then we get a torrential downpour. That's really the one where we will receive the most benefit if we do this project, is that's where it's problematic. We cannot stop hurricane titled surge. You can't stop it. This isn't gonna fix it. Your house is still gonna receive damage. Yes, you'll be able to get it to your home quicker, or get in your car quicker and leave, or get home quicker. But it's the, it's the July four to eight inches in a single day where high tide happens to happen at the same time. That's where it's going to fix that problem.
And you pointed out like the last week or two before, we had a hot 3.1 high tide. And your check valve or whatever, it closed 2.8 feet. So tide was up to 3.1 feet. We had that storm that came in for an hour. It only dumped it, it only dumped about an inch and a half worth of rain. And there was two feet of water in the street. It stayed in that street for almost two and a half hours because it came in right when the tide was right around three feet. Tide went up to 3.1. And I, I said to my wife, I said to my neighbor, when it hits 2.8, it'll start going out. And it stayed there until it hit 2.8, it started raining now again.
And my understanding is that with the gravity feet, the water is going from the top of the street vault all the way down and it's pooling there.
Right.
And it can't get out. And so what happens then is when more water comes, there's a point where it just starts to backwork. If I might take a step back, I'm not sure if I understand or whether we've walked through all of the four options. Maybe we need comment on those.
Sure.
Because I, I can comment from an aesthetic standpoint, what I think about those, but I'd like to hear from an engineering standpoint, what are the attributes of each of these options?
Okay. I'll start with option one. And this option is allows us to pump the water at the very last inlet before it goes out, so it's at the lowest point. And so to get this out, where it's pumping up, where it's not able to get out, that's why we chose a discharge to the creek. That's the eight inch discharge. So it, when the waters rise and there are check valves in there, so it won't come back through that creek back to the inlet. So it's just a one-way flow. And this allows us then to collect the water on 9th Street and then get that water and discharge it out to the next option.
And is that the heavy line that goes from the circle to the, to the creek?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you just say that you're going to deposit it in the creek where there's a check valve? Is that, is that what I was just saying?
It's gonna, it's gonna go to the north, to the creek. There's, there's no check valve there.
There's no check valve there, okay. You know, it seems to me that the final exit should be over the seawall, not through it. Because you're still low. You're still, you've got the same problem. If it's, if the water comes up too high, I mean, does it go back into that well? Yeah. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe the pressure is, is strong enough to push it on out.
Well, the, the discharge line from that wet well to the creek to the north is an eight inch force manger. Think of that. And so when it, when water is flowing through that, it can only go one way because there are check valves in the wet well.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but he, I think he's pointing out, water is not going to the side of the water again.
Well, the check valve would supposedly stop it. Okay, all right. So you would effectively, if you had a high tide event, it wasn't over the seawall, you would have enough pressure that it would still be blowing it out through that pipe?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that then.
Let me ask this while we're on this one. Is there any difference between what's proposed versus we're gonna be tearing up the street, or resurfacing the street? If it were projected out farther and into the street and not, not through all of those driveways?
You're talking about the, the discharge line?
Yeah.
So take it out into the street?
Is that an option?
It can't be. Yeah.
This seems like an easier, more.
It's just more expensive that way.
Yeah, because now you're having to, you're having to contend with, there's already a line right there running down the street.
And what, what is that line?
The heavy dash line is sanitary sewer.
Okay.
And then there's a solid line on the west side of the street, that's water main. And then there's a dash line that's running along in front of the homes on the east side, right hand side. That's the replant line.
If you could give us a key, that would be helpful. If you could give us a key or a legend?
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah.
That would be helpful.
And if you took it, if you did it middle of the street right now, you're proposing taking one inch, you're milling one inch off right now. If you put this into the street, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have at least a couple feet, you're gonna have to put in at least six inches of modified in there, plus the blacktop, three inches, so that's what the.
It's much smarter, it's, you've gotta get denses in the street or the truck.
So would be doing that anyway with building it through the driveway?
Not, not through. You don't have to worry about asphalt. You don't have to worry about.
You're not tearing the whole street up.
Got you.
Mr. Flue, how are you all time?
I'm, I'm fine.
Are you fine?
Yeah.
Counsel, I'd like to call a necessary five minute break. Everyone, do me a favor, don't discuss this while we're at break, all right? All right. Back to work again. Thank you, Mr. Flue. Great, we appreciate it.
Sure.
So we're discussing option two.
Okay. I guess we're going through the, the options. And I think the question, the catalyst, kinda explain each of the options a little bit and run through them. So, you know, the option one, you know, is at the last manhole putting the wet well for the proposed stormwater pump. And there, being at the downstream end, it'd be able to, be able to drain the water, take, pump it out to the creek to the north. And there won't be any backflow through that because it's a force manger. And so that has an effect of backflowing through the wet well back up into the street. And option two is taking that same concept and taking it across the street. And there, the discharge again would be from that wet well to, to the creek. And try to avoid as much conflict with the water and the replant water. And it being a, a force manger, it doesn't have to be dictated by gravity flow. So we could, that'll be a line that'll be typically the same depth as the water lines. So you're gonna make it since it's gonna be a force manger.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? What, what does it have to be fed by gravity?
The difference between the lines that we have on this draw, you'll see the inlets that collect it in the, in the lines and it takes it all the way to the wet well of the pump station. That's all gravity line, so it's all fed by water flowing through the culvert. And what we would do at that location is put in a pump station or the pumps that would take that water and then it controlled, it would then take that water, pump it out to the creek, to the, to the north. And this, wet well also be fed and have access, since it's all alone, this would be able to drain the water from the inlets across the street as well.
Same concept, across the street, and the pipe has to cross the street.
Exactly, that's it.
Is that the lowest point?
Now, the option one is the lowest point, but we're only within a few inches of difference.
And at that point, no matter where it is, the well is going to be lower than the lowest point of the entire, of the entire area.
And that is a cheaper option than one, it looks like.
Which I'm really surprised, it's my point.
Why is that?
Probably cannot remember that's how it came out.
It's probably because it's, it's right there on the street corner and not hidden well.
And it's, it is going through, it is going through the street.
Yeah, it's not hidden well. The, okay, option three is, I thought about, you know, the location of the wet well and pump. Is what if we took it to the north, put it up against the creek and have a gravity line connected to the downstream manhole storm manhole? So that that water could be softened out of that through the culvert here and then pumped over into the creek. And that, what we would do here is that this storm line from that existing manhole to the wet well would be about a 24 inch reinforced concrete pipe, so it'd be a concrete pipe, drainage line. And then that will go into the wet well. And then that'll be pumped up and over into the creek. And as the tide and the elevation goes up, it, it worked just like the others, backflow would not be back up into that pipe, but it would stay within that system.
As far as string on the pump, do you believe that there would be any difference?
Not 90s, like, there's not enough.
Not enough elevation change?
Right. Now, that's, that's anywhere, you know, the wet well can go in practically any location that we can find a location for. The cost of wanting to be within the same range that we have here, it's just, how do we get water to it? So that's, that's why you kinda see it, kinda over top the existing stormwater on us. And then pumping it out in the creek to the north is, is the easiest or less expensive way of getting the discharge away from the street now.
What, what's the solid line on this? This is three, so this is the one in the part, right? Where's the?
This is two.
Okay, so here, here it is, a solid line.
Right, because the pump is.
Option, are you sure it's the base, the least invasive out of everything as far as aesthetics?
Which one?
Option three.
Yeah, so I'm coming around. Now, what's four? How's that different?
Option four is on the other side of the street. Try to put it on the west side of the street. It's similar to option two, except it's just in a different location.
Is that, whose property is that? Is that Stan Silver's property?
It's rented.
It's a rental?
Yeah.
I can't remember which street it is on.
He's on, it's like, it's six.
Okay.
I've been told that house floods frequently.
Yeah, that's kind of the lowest properties.
I think it is. And that's why I asked, if that was the lowest point, because it flooded.
That flooded twice.
Yeah, it did.
Dalian or?
Maybe it was at Dalian, it flooded in the Dalian.
Dalian, I don't know what, I don't care. Irma, we were pretty lucky. It looks to me like any of these are a good solution. What I do notice that is that you've got centralized collection points. And I just wonder if there's any, any chance for failure by getting water away from the centralized area? Was that what you were thinking whenever you said best options? Okay. You're talking about what, gravity, run, failure? Yes, just in general, something possibly plug and all, I would add, because it's a central, one single point of failure.
So we were talking about the costing between option one and option two. When I'm looking at the, the cost breakdown for option two, I just didn't see anything there that jumped out at me that was gonna take into account the cutting through the street, asphalt or anything like that for the option two.
Oh, yeah. Now, I, I did, I didn't, I didn't have a line item in there for asphalt replacement or things like that. But I did, did take that into account.
Okay, so you feel comfortable that that cost, whatever it might be, is included in there?
Yes.
Because I was thinking, maybe that's why it was showing that it was less expensive than option one? Because you're only allocating.
If you're already gonna pave it, and you're, you're already unplugged it for that, so all you're doing is trenching that pavement there and modifying, modifying stuff.
So if it's not in a line item, where is it? Where is the cost?
To the original grid, through the paving?
No, the cost breakdown in there.
Oh.
Right there.
Oh, definitely.
And on the option four, we're showing the triple lines going from the, from the collection area there in option four?
Yeah.
Is that because that's not, what was the size of that line?
That's an eight inch line.
You did, but it.
Yeah, from the wet well out, that'd be an eight inch line. That'd be a force manger.
But again, yeah, and option two, it shows a thicker solid going from the pump? That, that's my question, why, why does it show differently? If we had the key there, that would be representing something different.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Oh, yeah.
Big solid line.
Right.
Well, I, I can give you the real reason.
Okay.
My drafting ability on CAD, I'm drawing a line.
No problem. It should be, it should be solid.
Yeah.
Line there going from the pump.
How about that young lady? She better draw.
Oh, she's much better than I. But where, we were.
No problem.
Coming up, so that's, that's kind of my.
Not a problem.
Now, does this change, no matter what option, if we select an option and say, all right, we wanna move forward with this, what does this do to the overall project? Does the rest of the project budget not change? Do we, do we remain the same?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so.
Let me make sure I understand that. So, so you can say that again?
So we're already budgeted for repairing all the plumbing, fixing the streets, fixing the gutters, finishing the citywide stormwater drainage project. This is above and beyond that?
Yes.
Okay, but this is what we were all hoping for was that you don't have to change the project because those are necessary anyway. So you, you pick up a convenient location and you drop in your well and your pump and your control mechanisms and power. I think that's one thing that's not on here. I don't see anything about power. So do we have any budget, any recommendations on that?
On the power? I'd rather talk with Duke Energy first on that. I can tell you what, what we were figuring, like 50,000 for the power, but I don't know if that's your real number. I would want to get a real number.
50,000 on top of this is much less than your initial proposal. We're just, we'll say estimated because you hadn't really dug into it.
For the power.
I, I don't have a problem doing this project at all. I will move for it.
Can I ask a simple question? We had a stormwater super tax rate when we paid, when residents paid. How much do we pull in every year?
170,000 or 175,000? And what is that percentage? I should know all this, I don't know the percentage of the taxes that the residents pay. Because if we're pulling in 170,000 a year, of course we're going to use some of that money to pay back the bond, of course. But I want to see like from First Street to, they have these problems. And if you could maybe just increase that a bit to 250 a year, you know what I'm saying?
It's 30 months, so.
Yeah, so increase it another five hours.
360 a year.
Thirty every two months.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, you know what I'm saying? I think it's five to 10 dollars.
The city manager had another idea of how to fund it. But you explain how to fund, how to fund this? What their plan was, was it just a budget arrangement?
Oh, I mean, as far as reserves, we have reserves. We just have to rework, you know. Well, if this works is what I'm saying. I'd like to see the whole city eventually because you've got big problems down first, you know. The next, you know, you know what I'm saying? I don't, as NWI said, let's see if this works. You know, digging up the street now, this works in the future, you know.
The other streets are, those projects are completed on that, in that area.
Yes.
But while we're doing this, this is a good.
It's a good.
As I was stating earlier, I really don't have a problem voting for this. Whichever option, I'm actually going to ask you to speak to your neighbors and find out which option works best for the neighborhood. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones who have to look at it and hear it and the construction and everything else. But also, they're the ones that you're going to have to hear from whenever the water crests and seeped. Okay, because they're going to think that this is going to stop flooding and they need to all be aware that it's not going to stop flooding. It's going to help remove the flooding after it's happened.
Well, as well as prevent certain flooding.
It will prevent, yes. It'll reduce.
There's these rain situations when the, when the tide is at its highest and they're happening with more frequency and more severity.
Yes, yes.
So this will likely prevent quite a few. When we get a big storm, everybody's in trouble. But, but this will likely prevent many, many storms.
But even a big storm may reduce the risk because as the one resident down says, there is a small window for peaks.
Yeah.
Okay, so you eliminate the water in the street before the peak, okay? Then you accomplish, I believe, a great task because NWI explained it right here. And then you don't have that water sitting in the street for six to eight hours over the downtime.
Well, let me ask this, because the repairs that are underway, that is the normal project of repaving and then when the line broken pipes, steel pipes, do some lining, will that, will that help Ninth Street?
The, it will help get water to the inlets, to the collection points. So it'll get it there more efficiently than it is now. And the, you know, the pipes aren't scheduled to be replaced, but I think what it will help is help get water to the collection points, which is at the inlets. And, and that's, that's big help, is getting it there and then the pump system then will get it out during the high water times. So it'll help the recovery would be better because when the water gets up so hot, there's only so much water to keep pumping out. But it will keep the intensity down, so it'll recover a lot faster.
Because one thing I'd like to, for us to consider is that bringing the, the street project back to Ninth Street too, while we consider all those good bids implemented and assuming it would have moved ahead, is that it might still give some protection to Ninth Street now as we're entering that big storm of the season. And also say that we're already like seven months behind where the plan provided for Ninth Street. We moved it over while we were considering this, but if we move ahead, I'd like for us to move it back to Ninth Street so we can get those protections in place.
And what, what would, the only way that that would be possible would be if you select an option that does not cross the street. Am I correct? So if you pick an option where the tunnel goes through someone's yard, the exit tunnel, then you could theoretically move forward with Ninth and go ahead and have the pavement and guttering and whatever else is in the plan. But if you select an option where it crosses the street, it's a big waste of money and time not, I mean, to do it and then come back. Just how, Mr. Bluey, how long do you think it will take to gear up and to obtain the equipment? And then you do the line and do everything to install these pumps?
So essentially, how, how long will it take to install the wet well pumps? The, I think a timeframe on that, I'm going to say six to eight months.
That's kind of what I figured. That's, that's lead time on the actual pumps in all of our.
Right.
I'm going to copy on Duke.
What's that?
Duke's not very quick either. I got it with three phase power. They got their engineering department, you know, they want plans drawn up and they're going to answer.
So that, that, I hope that answered your question. You have to decide which, which way. And I don't think it, does it add a lot more? Does it add any more to the cost if you come back later? Provided you're not digging up through the street, tunneling under the street.
Correct.
From an engineering perspective, which is the preferred option?
The preferred option would be, from an engineering standpoint, option one.
And that's the one that wouldn't cross the street?
Right. Yeah, it keeps everything on that side of the street. Don't have to be digging up the street and then it gets it out.
I think there's one more item to consider also is how Duke is going to run their power.
Right.
That may require digging up the street.
At that point, that's going to be all up Duke.
Can we tell where their power is on this?
There's a power pole.
It's a power pole right there.
Yeah, right there, I don't know.
But it's, it's at the line of capacity going into that.
The closest place I know most of your faces are. That way over there.
Our equipment. Sort of had to come over from our building.
Tunnel pole's there at the edge where I got that arrow. And I'll talk to the city manager and I'll talk with Duke. Make sure, because we'll need three phase power there, so.
My recommendation would be to wait. I know, I know you want it now. Last, last year, three years ago. But that would be, until we know, I mean, we may waste a whole lot of money because you paved it, guttered it, and then they have to come in and tear something up to let this happen. And that's the problem is we don't really have a good engineering plan for this project yet.
Maybe it will ease your mind, no disrespect. The water that's coming in, you're going to say it's going to get faster to the drains. Like with the project before is without pumps.
Yeah.
But as, again, it'll be faster to the drains, but once those drains are closed and they can go down, you're going to have the same effects as you did five years ago, two years ago or whatever. So.
And now you've got, now you've got brand new asphalt.
Right, and as the mayor said, you know, when are you really getting out of it except for waste? Or possible waste? So you're not, you're not losing anything by waiting another in once. Hopefully we don't have a horrible storm, but we do, we do.
What are other people's thoughts in terms of where we're at?
Well, when you're saying that the water's going to get faster to the drains and on Ninth Street, if I remember correctly, there's no pipe changes on that street, right? No increased pipe. So we're not increasing the volume that's going to the drains. So why are we saying that the water's going to get faster to the drains?
Through the street gutter, on the surface.
Okay.
So it can get there more efficiently.
It's not permeable either because it's fresh asphalt.
Right.
So, I think that's a minimal thing now. The same.
Yeah.
That's, that's not going to really change much. But it's going to be nicer, the street's going to be nicer, the gutter's going to be better, all that.
But the effects are going to be the same.
What's the difference?
If it was blocked, it's okay.
Well, I think, I think you said that, you know, option one would probably be the best approach. All the costs, as the mayor already said, are very, very similar. It was just a matter of talking to the homeowners and seeing. Anybody, for example, in option one, when you're going through their papers and all that, those people are going to be thrilled. Sure. So.
Well, and the other item is, are we going to consider the undergrounding of the controls? Because those people may have objections if there are pipes going out of their front yard.
It wouldn't be a priority of control house.
Oh, okay, because that, I wanted to look at 22nd Street, maybe the pipes.
Uh, just electrical.
Electric, conduit, power panel.
Yeah, there's no plumbing.
Probably see like a three-inch conduit for water.
Maybe that was it. It was a big stainless steel thing and it's probably like.
And that one's way bigger than what we're talking about. It's for a full sewer system to push the water.
You see some of the boxes on Gulf Pool or they're getting ready for you undergrounding the screen?
Yes.
It's going to be smaller, it should be smaller than that.
Oh, good, well, here, I took photos. So tell me what this would look like. So I went to three, but there were three different types of boxes. There was an older green one, a brand new green one, and a stainless steel one.
You were probably talking about something like this on the middle of the tower. Unless, you want to take this as an expert? I said she's probably, you're probably talking about a box that size would hold.
Yes.
And how tall do you think?
It'd be a thin panel, probably about, about eight. I mean, it could be, we can dictate the size and height on that. But typically it's at a, the worker comes up, so he goes, I'm just going to open a panel. So there's just those types of.
OSHA.
Oh, so it could, because these are low.
Here.
Oh.
All, all this is an access box to the main.
The goal is to just keep it higher than the water will ever rise out of it.
Oh, right.
Because if you do, if you do one that's underground, if there is a maintenance issue, over time, things do wear out.
Just like your air conditioning unit has to get so high.
Okay.
It'd probably be about the same as your air conditioning unit in the height. Because you got to select.
So how about the Seventh Street escalator? Are you going to do that as well?
Seventh Street.
This is only Ninth tonight.
Yeah, but you get the costing over here for Seventh Street. What do they all see then?
Now Seventh Street is on here.
The Seventh Street's on the left side right there.
Seventh Street's more, I don't know why.
Well, I don't see what option for Seventh.
That's correct.
Yeah, at Seventh Street, there's the wet well and the, in the park area.
Okay.
And then the discharge out. It could, that could be, you know, the same as the others, of course, maybe. It can be higher and.
That, that project's relatively simple because there's only one option.
That's it.
And costly, that one is.
That's the highest one.
Basically, exactly. Close to the same price. So we didn't get a nice drawing on that one, but I guess it's not necessary. We like future.
Must be good.
No, I have no nice drawings for Seventh.
There's, there is a Seventh Street drawing in the end, in the back end. Maybe on the back.
There is.
Yeah, it's called Seventh Street, deep down.
I see.
Again, they're all close in price, but why is Seventh Street a little bit more? What's more complex there?
I'm trying to think of numbers.
You've got a street that's already done. We're working off a street that has a, it's going to be opened up. Ninth Street, here you're going, you're getting your street redone already. Seventh Street is already done.
So this new, this, this pipe going to the well is a brand new pipe from the street? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that makes sense. That's, it looks like a long line too. And it's going underneath the low end driveway. These, the three lines next to the well.
That's an existing storm discharge.
Storm what?
Stormwater discharge, that's the big line, that's the county line.
Okay, all right. It's nothing for us.
Right.
I see. I like the location. Questions, comments? Okay, well, I think we've run out of questions. It's just a matter of you guys and girls going to speak to your neighbors and finding out what really, what would like to be.
If I could ask a term of honor, how can we do that? Is there any way that you can do that together?
No.
Have to do it separately?
Very simple answer, no, do not do it together.
Or have a public meeting?
Well, we can have a public meeting. The challenge that you face with a public meeting is the public is not compelled to engage in your meeting. Whereas if you're in friendly conversation with other residents and property owners in the community, you're free to speak with them individually. You and any other member of the council cannot do. You and any other member of the council cannot do so jointly. Or, 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 and, you also cannot use third parties to do what you could not do directly. So you could not say to, please let me know what you think, I hear that you're gonna have a conversation with, with council member Moore. When you meet with council member Moore, come back and tell me what he says. Can't do that either, not, not suggesting you would, but just to, to define the contours of that. But you are free at any time to get the feedback of your constituents, property owners, anybody else who you're interested in discussing policy issues with, as long as you're not doing so in the presence or indirectly with your fellow council members.
And what about city manager reefer? No problem there, right?
There is no issue with you individually meeting with the manager reefer or by way of example on the sign code meeting directly on an issue. But again, I would not meet with two of you at any given time on a policy issue or serve as an intermediary.
I mean, I, I see one, two, three, four, maybe five homes impacted by this. And, and, I mean, that's it, that's, that's the only people that really would need to be, to ask about it.
Yeah, if it's option one, then really, two, I think if you look at the one across the street, that's one, maybe to identify that it is.
Or you look at the one guy with the pump. I mean, that's the guy that would have had the box.
So when the pump is running, from a noise perspective, would, would any of the homeowners possibly be concerned about that?
Should, but I can verify that with the pump manufacturer, of course, the decimals and the sound, what they would hear.
Or an interesting, related to that would be when it's not working, is there any sound? When the pump's not running, there's nothing that you hear a hum from power or anything like that? Okay. Because if it's running, you'll all be thankful that it's doing so.
I have a feeling you won't hear it at all because it'll be under water.
Most likely.
Okay, any other questions or comments about this? Before Mr. Fleury goes home and has a nice evening?
Thank you.
It's been great. I appreciate you coming tonight. And this is a great presentation, thank you for answering all of our questions. Thank you for showing him how to use a computer.
You don't know how much I say thank you.
All right, well, now we are on to general business, do we have anything that council would like?
I apologize, can I ask one more question?
No, you're all out of questions, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can you give an example of another community that has implemented a similar pump and what their experience has been?
Shore Acres. I don't know if they used MWI, but they, they put pumps in their system. And they were mass flooding it, but now they got a spray. If I say dry streets, they got wet streets, by the way. I mean, I've seen four lawyers using them. He, he gave us that, I forget the community, he showed us which was always under water.
From MWI? I think that was North Shore. I got it, if I remember that.
Shore Acres still have.
Because they, sure, there's a theory, they put a lot, they, they, as people are there, they're mass.
My therapist was telling me, she heard me talking to the city chief about it, she says, we put the pumps in, she says, we're not everybody. And she was, he was at her, near the house or the garage.
Okay, any, anything else? Councilmember, really, it?
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Fleury.
Thank you.
Okay, general business, does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss? So I have one topic that I would like to bring up, but that's not to me first.
Any update on the candidates to be appointed to the council?
Funny, you should bring that up, because that was what I was gonna discuss. As far as the three candidates go, I'm really, I'm struggling with electing them. And the reason why is because I look out into the audience and I would think that at least one would be here right now, trying to get used to what we do, learn about city justice. And whenever I look back, I have to ask the question, how many have ever participated in anything that we did? Now, I, I will admit that we do have a state council member that I pretty much tracked, because I knew that she would be a good candidate, or a good, a good fit, at least I hope that she would. And, and that, that worked out well. But I look at this council and I see that we're actually, we're working out well. We're getting the job done. And I'm just wondering if really there's an immediate need to fill any more seats?
Yeah, anybody at this point in time, so let's say somebody else was interested, we have to have a special poll?
We are not, we're not open for applications at this time. And, and so the reason why I bring up the appointees, right now, we have three actual elected municipal officials for our council. That they actually knock on doors, they got to know the community, they actually came in and said in our meetings, they followed what was going on, they were very active, and had the will of the people that were elected. If we had one, two, or three more, those are people that, that the citizens did not select. Again, I don't see any of them here tonight.
If I might add one thing about that, with museum buildings, I think his plan had been to be fit. And it's all about, so.
I'm sorry to hear that. Going back, you know, prior to suddenly having an interest, and I suspect that maybe you were drafting him.
Actually, no.
He, he, there's some means before that.
He did, and, and he told me that he had, I mentioned that I had been in favor of the bond issue. And I spoke to that, and he spoke to the fact that, let's look at this and evaluate the project. And he says, yeah, I know, I was there. So he attended that also, so he's been involved.
So there's been a few that he's, he's actually attended. And, and the three candidates, have any of them served on anything, I would say, any of our committee's awards or any of that?
They're all three very deep.
No, no, I, I'm not challenging their personalities or anything like that, I'm just, what I'm trying to do is, is, I'm just asking the question, am I doing the right thing? I really have a problem with three people walking in that, okay, let's say maybe two have not really done anything and really have had no prior exposure or interaction with city business or even paid attention to it until now. And is that really what the people that voted for us would want us to be? And so that, that's, that's what I'm gonna leave you guys and let you with, that I'd like this council to, to leave this meeting and put some deep thought into what's the correct action for the council. I, I definitely have a major struggle with taking three people and just filling three seats. Because now we've got four unelected and three elected.
Right now, we can't fill three because the charter amendment's all within, right?
Yes, sir.
So now our charter sits bottom, well, it doesn't.
That is the only one that had a different effective date than the others.
We do not have to fill all seven, we do, we don't even have to fill the fifth. We, we can continue down the road that we're on right now, which is actually working out pretty well. Or we can add another and maybe that'll work out well also. But I think that, I think it would be a mistake to fill all seven seats with a majority that's non-elected.
And I've had some citizens talk to me about that, more than one or two, go the same way. But here is a question, so let's say, let's say we don't pursue any other three, just as an assumption. If we had somebody that checked all the boxes that just approached any of us and said, you know what, I'm interested in doing this, what mechanism would be able to put in place to open up a window for people to get a lot of application?
It requires us to designate an open and closing time to accept applications.
We don't really even have to do that, do we? I mean, the council has so discretion.
No, not necessarily, you're, you're correct, you don't necessarily have to do that. You have the discretion to accept candidates at any time, thus far we've been establishing periods, qualifying periods, but we can solicit on an open basis and state by, you know, anything received by the state will be considered. There's nothing in the, in the charter code that specifically requires us to repeatedly reopen narrowly defined time periods.
Yeah, some of us on council love these resumes, which I'd say there's anything wrong with, you know, I explore the guy's background. But she lived here, we could put her on. Oh, I couldn't put her on the council. No disrespect. But we could put him on. He said no way to, I think. But we could put him on, you know, the door to council meeting, is what I'm saying.
But we would have to, Randy, we would have to say we're opening it up to some period in the road?
Not necessarily, what I, what I was suggesting is you may wish to have a date certain that you're, if you're, if you're soliciting applications and written materials, it's helpful to have a deadline for people to timely submit those. But there's nothing that specifically says we have to, you have to open it for seven days, not to exceed the this day and that, like, it's, it's not that strict. You folks, you four are defining the process and however you wish to control how you appoint people, you know, I would, the lawyer and the member banker has the caution, of course, you could appoint somebody provided there, and if, we can, we can certify that they're qualified elector and otherwise. But, you know, and that's why we require the materials is so your clerk, as your supervisor of elections, can authenticate that they are in fact a resident, they are in fact a registered voter and otherwise qualified to serve. But beyond getting the information necessary to establish that they're a qualified candidate, and I mean qualified like basic legal qualifications, at that point, it's your process.
Now, I will also say, just so that you know, I greatly appreciate you being on this council and your work, and how awesome you're asking all right questions. You also saved the day because we did not have anyone and we, business would have stopped. And so I applaud you for answering that call and I'm truly grateful that you, every time we have meetings, you are, you definitely add a lot of value to this council.
What about me, Dave, like, didn't I save the day?
No, I'm tired of heading on.
Your answer was corrupt.
I was just flattered you wanted to spend more time with me, Frank.
Now, you just left it out to the public, that's the only reason I stayed on.
Okay, so do we wanna have more conversation or do we just wanna add to the, to the, the next council meeting? And see where the chips fall, because you're the chairman, where do you want to do it? I, I would like to wait, I would like to wait on bringing in another council member.
If I could take thirty seconds and just add, add some thoughts, one is, thank you for, for your comments as well as the fact that recognizing that we're doing well, this is good, it feels pretty good, we can be collaborative, so that's great. I did want to, since you mentioned recruiting, I just wanted to clarify that one because when we first had our stalemate and we realized the importance of the four-member form as well as a four-member and their four unanimous vote, I had issued a letter to the citizens through the female system, and I think it was a few, that's my first letter, so you guys were putting the pump aside and, and emphasizing the importance that we have more people, because I think that's where we were at that point, is what we wanted to have. So that's one, the unders responded. So he came forward on his own. It may have been a response to that letter, it may have been, it could say he's already thinking about it, I don't know, but, but anyway. So, secondly, as we think about ties, obviously that's important. So having one or another would help to lift ties. But also, as we consider the form, I think all of us have busy lives, things are going on. We're all committed to being here and being present at meetings twice a month, but there is a lot of planning, things, and things do happen. So what might be helpful for the form, if we either have more clarity or maybe some loosening in terms of physical presence. So what can be done and can an ordinance be changed, or is this a charter issue? Or can something be liberalized, the physical presence and, and have more flexibility about virtual presence? And it could even be, you know, no more than once a year, or no more than, you know, so many, so many.
We have unlimited now.
Right, for individual members, we have unlimited, to the extent of, is my recollection as well. Though I'd wanna, I'm always gonna give you the copy, but I wanna check what it's in writing. That's my recollection as well, member banker. The physical presence requirement is one for the physical quorum. So one member can be absent or, depending on your, in your current composition, one of you can be appearing remotely. So you can't go out of town the same time Frank's trying to go to Philly and then us have a meeting, right? For example. And that doesn't come from the city's ordinances. Candidly, I don't think it comes from any law I can show you in writing. Because the, what the sunshine law requires is that we have an open and public meeting. And the way that the attorney general's office has opined and articulated that that should be enforced is, requires a physical quorum. And there is some, like, Law Review articles out there saying, but where is this? It's being read into it, but it's not explicitly there, it's been read into it in the sense that then the public can't see what are the off-screen elements in this, especially in the yesteryear of conference calls, we can't see what other things you're looking at and what you're doing and who you're talking to off-mic or whatever else. And so the, in the interest of the Article One, Section Twenty Four, interest of everything happening out in public, that's where that comes from. But I, again, there is some division of opinion on that. What happened in COVID is it really came to drive the message home that this is, everybody agrees we're bound, we're bound by this because every community was relying on executive orders from the governor to waive that requirement. And as city, town, village, and attorneys and county attorneys, we were saying, hey, I wouldn't advise you have one unless we've got the executive order still in place that's waiving this physical quorum requirement. But when you go to Chapter Two Eighty-Six, you will not see it written there. It is the way that the state has, and not even necessarily the courts, but the state has opted to enforce and interpret it. And then as the lowest on the totem pole, we say, well, if that's how they're interpreting it, I'm not gonna be the one who says, let's try it without and take the challenge. But I will tell you, I think even one of my colleagues wrote a Law Review article on this in the early 2000s saying, this isn't really there, and in modern media, it shouldn't necessarily be a requirement, but it's preserved as part of the spirit of the sunshine law in making all of the affairs of the council transparent and visible to the public. So that's where that physical quorum comes from, that's not from your charter, that's not from your code, that's from Chapter Two Eighty-Six, sunshine law as administered.
That's how.
Yeah, and as, as it stands right now, whether you're online or if you're just one of us, it's just not here. We still have a quorum and we're in good shape. If two of us are out, I don't, you know, I would actually, I'm just not sure how I feel about it, you know? We, we postponed meetings before because we didn't have a quorum and we survived. Okay, we couldn't meet this day, we'll meet next Monday. And we, we've adapted pretty well, and I don't really see a, maybe an issue with it, I, I don't think.
What is our quorum?
Three, it's always been a majority of the council. But these things got conflated, but it's always been a majority of the council, so eve, for every moment that you've been four, a quorum has been three. The question was, what does it take for you to do official acts? Because if three of us gather, but we can't vote on anything or do anything, why are we gathering? Was sort of the, the division.
Right.
Right? So, and, and the word quorum is just what, what is required to gather lawfully. But then there's a higher, you have this heightened requirement. Now, it is you only need a majority of the council to take official acts, not four. So now, if three of you have a meeting, you can meet and you can take official acts. That's what's changed, is the ability to take official...
Because of that.
Because of the charter.
And, and when I got on the council, uh, and Dave got involved, and Kyle, just our sound system floor, if you did it by phone, you couldn't hear nothing. I'm talking, it was, it was bad, and I don't think you should even laugh back then.
No, it was terrible.
And he, he attacked it. And now I think it's, you might have maybe a two-second delay, but I mean, it's crystal clear, you know?
And, and I will caution all of you that the only, the only hesitation I'll have for you folks appearing remotely is if we're having a quasi judicial hearing and there's a concern that you will not be able to receive the evidence presented. If you're saying, I wanna appear by phone, well, they're gonna be putting on maps and displays for a variance hearing or something that came before you. That would be the only place where I, as your city attorney, would say, I have a little concern about so-and-so appearing remotely. Most everything you've done has been legislative, and the way your boards work, you don't get too much, very, too many, uh, quasi judicial matters before you. But I do owe it to you to tell you that if we found ourselves in that posture, that might be the one place where I'm like, eh, I don't love that.
So, you know, I'm gonna go back to what I was, uh, originally asking was, can we put this off for a little while? And see how it's working with the council? And if we decide that maybe it's problematic to not have five, then we open the, the, uh, application process back up, take a few applications and see who's best. Thoughts?
And we heard in these things, some of these candidates, that filed an application, they called the city and all, the...
I met the two of them.
They're still in?
I heard differently.
Okay.
They all say this, like, you told the other mayor, I wanna work with you, right? We might have objections, I told him, okay?
No, I'm fine with an objection, that's, uh, that's your priority, right?
That's my independence, um, I, I owe it to the citizens, of course, like, I, I want to work with you, and the chairman, and the mayor of the city, Angela's the mayor of the city, I wanted to work with them, I told them the same thing, he said, you don't agree with something? Please don't vote for it, but it did me a debate.
Stay true to yourself and stay true to your core. That's, that's all I ask of you.
So if you wanna delay it, I don't have a problem.
Everyone else will hear that.
With the understanding that if, um, we could still bring any or all of the candidates back, if we wanted to, to vote.
Someone would have to, uh, put it on the agenda, and a motion would have to pass.
And the candidates would have to still be interested in whatever that later date was.
The other, the other candidates.
And there may be others as well, correct?
Yeah, that, I mean, if they decide, if someone decides that we want to, uh, open, open that back up, then I, all I would ask for is that we open the entire city up to, for people to apply, as I said. Because I want, whatever, whoever it is, if, if we do this, then I want the very best candidate we can get. Because remember, we are electing this person, not the citizens. And that's why I just don't feel very good about it. Any other general business, otherwise I will ask for a motion.
How, how will those incentives be advised?
Um, could you, Michelle? Here you go. All right, uh, I have a motion to adjourn, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.